Okay. In talking with Ben, there was one other candidate willing to come and talk with us or interview with us on the 22nd. The question for council is, if we, I think, if we interview that individual, that we need to hold off discussions if we choose to interview. So, my question to council is, do we want to interview this last person? And if so, do you want to hold off discussions?
Yes.
You do want it?
Well, obviously, I think the fair thing is we offered an interview. She wants to see if we have enough, the chance to present itself. And I think it's a good point to discuss if we interview the final person.
Excuse me, did I supply the background information that Kathy provided on the last candidate?
I thought you did.
There was information.
Not from Pennsylvania.
I think you did.
I would personally be in favor of having a discussion of the candidates that are interviewed. I mean, we can keep interviewing and moving forward and such, but I think we've conducted enough interviews. Unfortunately, the additional candidate is not available until the 22nd. I think we start losing our perspective on interviews that we have done and lose a sense of fairness to those that have already been interviewed by the council. That's just my perspective.
Okay. Or any other?
I made a comment for this discussion. I think somehow we should be somewhat timely because if you postpone things, your attitude and everything else, how you, how people interviewed last week, your attitude one way and then you take notes on today and how you feel today, truthfully, it's hard, it's hard to make a fair comparison. I think we should be somewhat timely.
Okay.
That's my position.
Okay.
I mean, I would like to see the other guy too, but that's how many days away and how do you march on and be fair? That's my problem, you know?
I personally feel like the, out of the four candidates, we have enough strong candidates that I wouldn't even need to interview none. And I'd be okay with discussing the candidates this evening and... My worry is, similar to what we had last time, is we offer a candidate and he's not available, or we offer a candidate and they've chosen another opportunity and I don't think I want to be in that position again.
Careful, man. I'm ready for that.
Okay. What I'm hearing is that council would like to discuss the candidates. So, we have interviewed this evening, so we'll proceed with discussing that. I've also heard when council member say that he thought there was a good candidate among... Does it, do we narrow the list down? Does somebody have one that's outstanding more so than the others that they just...
I feel out of the four candidates, we have two strong candidates to talk about tonight. First one is David Bachmann.
Okay.
And the second is Thad.
Okay.
I'd agree with that.
I would second that. Dave Bachmann, I, you know, just in listening with, you know, to the interview tonight, you know, understand personal development and such and encouraging people and staff development for the FBI Academy, but that hasn't been to the FBI Academy. And Chief Bachmann has been to the FBI Academy. Thad's education is a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. And Bachmann's got a master's degree in public administration. You need to look at a person that develops themselves in the same light that they strive to develop other people. And what the chief has done with the police department and his staff and what he's done with the fire department in encouraging education, certification, and growth. And I feel that of the candidates that we've interviewed, from my perspective, he's the strongest. Thad's a strong candidate. But I really lean towards Chief Bachmann.
I, I support Dave. I got notes here and I was comparing Thad with the interview with Dave and I thought Dave, in my mind, was a better candidate, but you gotta understand, Dave made a comment, let's not just survive, let's thrive. And that's what he did in the police department and that's what he's done in the fire department. And you can't take that away. He's, and as far as training, he's done the training with the fire department and over and done that. He's done it right here with our own police department. I mean, we've got a police officer right here that's been, that after Dave's been through, he recommended going through. Both candidates are very strong. I think Dave has the same outlook and perhaps achieved some achievements that Thad did when he was a public administrator, not just a city manager, but with just being a public safety manager. The inner issue was, is that Dave's made a comment about, he serves us now and protects us. Where Thad made a comment, if I get back here, well, Dave said he's serving us now and protects us now. He made a comment, that's not for a public safety director, that's more for a manager. And that kind of really put David in the limelight for me. He's already trying to serve us and he's already doing it, where the other one waited till he became a manager. So, I think Dave has exceeded.
I had questions, I had questions about, in my mind, about Mr. Bachmann being able to make that transition to being, being a police worker myself, making that transition between being arrogant, if you will, because police officers are arrogant and that's a part of the territory, to becoming the city manager. This shows me that can be done. He's been a public safety director, he's been a police, he's made that transition. So, that kind of eased my mind there. Mr. Bachmann and my, I've attended a lot of council meetings, many, many council meetings before I got out of council. I have never known Mr. Bachmann not to do what he was told by council to do. If it wasn't illegal, immoral, and it was accomplishable, he would do that. I think he would follow instructions and I think he would do good. I think he's a strong candidate.
I have no question and would never in a million years question his integrity, his professional character and his ability to manage the departments he's in. There's nobody I'd choose above Chief Bachmann in those two roles. I do, I do, I have concern at the transition and his expertise and skill set at the city manager level because it is a completely different responsibility to manage the city as a whole versus managing the two departments that you're comfortable with and have been doing your whole career. And that's where, and I agree, survive and not, or thrive and not survive, I agree, he's done that tenfold in those two departments. But I don't know, and I didn't get necessarily from the interview and from his background where that's going to translate to the success of the city and not just the success of his two departments. So, those are some transitional issues that I have some concern about.
I think the time between Mr. Bachmann and Mitch in office was filled for about a nine-month period of time with Chief Bachmann as the interim manager. Was that not true?
I'm not sorry.
Wasn't Dave the interim manager between you and Mitch?
No, he wasn't that. It was Ken Holmichak with his second by Dan Rose.
When I look at all the candidates, you know, I kind of did the same thing that we did with the first five, you know, I looked at the ideal candidate and went through that. And, you know, we went through a scoring system and I did that on my own. And some of the things, because we all know Dave, we know him a lot better than any of the other candidates. So, trying to take out that and look truly at the skill sets that we have before us. Yes, Dave has done exceptional job in combining especially our fire and our police. He has that personality that you need for that type of department. When I look at though, what we're looking for as overall manager, how did his skill sets rate our other candidate that we're looking at, Thad? He doesn't have the economic development, he doesn't have a lot of the financial aspects that Thad understands. So, in my mind, Thad does rate higher than Dave does in those aspects. Looking at a management style, Dave has a very direct, very, yes, what we ask him to do, he gets done. He also has a very authoritative type style in his department. You need to have that to make it work and he's done a great job at that. How much of that translates into a successful city manager? Yes, you do need that skill at times and at other times, you need someone who's less so strong in that area and more collaborative. And I know Dave has done collaborative work. Team building, I think Thad has done that as well as Chief Bachmann. But I think Thad has had more opportunity as far as the variation in team collaborations. He's taken what he's learned in communities and trying to build it, such as the strategic plan. He took that from Alpena, he was building that now in his current community that he lives in. He's able to take what he's learned and try to build it in to the communities that he's serving. The way he's handled his different communities and the different situations, I was very impressed with the fact, what he went through in Alpena, he did not speak ill of Alpena at all or the people that he worked with. He's able to get across the challenges that he's come across without putting anyone else in negative light or his community in a negative light. That can be said for all our candidates that we've talked to throughout this entire process. So, I was very impressed with that. He's very well spoken. I think he's a more rounded experience and education that he can bring our community. He wants to be here. And another thing that I was looking for when we started this process was looking for somebody new, somebody who wasn't connected, who was coming in with a blank slate that he didn't know us or we didn't know him, no preconceived ideas. That works well for Dave, but both ways. There's some people that highly respect him, highly like him. Yes, he knows our community, but then there's the opposite, that there's people who don't want to work with him or who don't like him because they already have those preconceived ideas. So, I was, when we started this process, looking for somebody new, a clean slate. And Thad fits that bill more so than Dave Bachmann for me. When I look at skill sets, when I look at what I'm looking for in our next city manager, while Dave is, the qualifications and he's done excellent job, Thad for me kind of outweighs Dave Bachmann.
Mr. Bachmann is a highly organized individual. He only wants the best for his people, for his departments right now, making sure that they're safe, they do their job, and their job is always well done. My question in my mind about Mr. Bachmann is economic development because he's, he has worked in hand with union contracts with police and the fire. But I believe that Mr. Bachmann, not knowing something with economic development, would go grasp that apple off the tree and take it and make it, if you know what I mean. Now, Thad has a lot of good qualities also. He has a ton of experience through varied communities and jobs. Economic development with Cedar Springs and Alpena, working with communities outside the city, he's had success. They're very good candidates. That's all I can say right now.
Okay. Are we looking to narrow this list down to three?
I would like, I mean, we're talking about Mr. Bachmann and Mr. Taylor. I think we go with two. That's my thought.
Are we at a point, do we feel that we take a role at this point? Or do we need further discussion?
I think here's some comments, people have commented about can Mr. Bachmann make the transition? Can he learn about economic development? Can he... Does anybody want to comment on that? Do they feel that he's been around long enough that he could do that?
Well, I can learn engineering, but I don't, I can't learn it overnight. Economic development is not just something you pull a book off the shelf and start reading about. It's knowing the context at the state level, at the MEDC level, at the other economic development committees, networking at that economic development level, knowing what it takes to embrace, like Thad had talked about, doing a rewriting a development agreement within the city to encourage growth at that level, being able to incentivize through creative tax benefits. And again, these are all things that, again, you don't just take a book off and learn overnight. So, I do think he could get up to speed at that level, but we're already nine months past having a city manager and a proactive strategy for economic development and, you know, what, what level and what learning curve is acceptable for the community to get there. So, again, I think from, there's things that he's got involved with that, you know, there's, I think they both have their background in law enforcement and fire department. They both have the background in union. They're equal in a lot of skills, but I think where Thad, for me, took that additional step was his economic development, his zoning and planning, his ability to understand and write and renegotiate development agreements. And then I, I think I agree with the mayor in a sense that a fresh perspective within this community may be a dose of what we need. I mean, outside of these candidates, prior to this, we were all an external candidate. The first five people we interviewed were all external candidates and we were all on form of bringing in an external candidate without the consideration of an internal candidate at that point because none were, none applied. But again, I think that's, that is still on that mindset that to bring some fresh ideas, approaches, and skill sets, that would be what I'm leaning towards.
I don't, I agree with council member that said that Chief Bachmann is a very intelligent man. I think that he could learn it, as you say, in time. I think he'd have to rely heavily on staff to bring him up to speed. During the interview, I was a little disappointed in the fact that he is in our community. He was approached, he did not apply for the position like our other candidates. And even at that, there were some questions that he was asked that I would have thought you would have had more knowledge of just for the fact that he was in this community and if he's applying for the job, that you would have had some basic understanding of some of the questions that we asked. Whereas Thad already grasps those ideas, he understands what you do.
I'll go back to the interview with the chief. One of the things that he said when we talked about leadership or management was confidence and being decisive and that he has a, how do I help make it happen attitude? I think he's already got the networks, he already knows the people in the community, he's worked extensively with the tribal government and made things happen for certification of the tribal police, he's familiar with the townships. I really think that the transition would be quick and efficient. I think he certainly got the academic background, he's got a graduate degree in public administration. Would be an opportunity for him to grow further in his career in public service. And I still think firstly, he's the best candidate that we've interviewed.
And I like Thad's response and what he's done with the county and its involvement and that's a big step to go to have your own police department and combine that with the sheriffs and do it as successfully as he was able to do that. And he also offered up other examples of collaborative services, which is something that we've always talked about and felt that this is, in the long term, where our communities need to be. So, I think Thad has that skill set and that experience.
You know, two there. Mr. Bachmann did it as a public safety director, he under fire had, he ultimately got two township's were responding where everyone wanted to be a manager. He could have done the same thing, he was a public service manager. So, as far as the energy being presented here, I think Dave has accomplished a lot of this stuff with being a public safety director where Thad, yes, he got, he got into it and did it, but as a manager position. I think Dave has already exceeded into that, has already accomplished that and wants to move forward. And then a guy who was in the police and all that, and he learned it, just what you're saying. I believe the opportunities are there and I believe that he would. That's my position.
I wonder how much, I'm not being, not attending staff meetings that you have weekly. I'm not aware of how much a person learns over years and years of going to those staff meetings and when we say up to speed, just how up to speed are you, what do you know about economic development? Something must rub off just by going to these meetings, I would think. That's my thought for the session. I just, I don't know how much a person picks up at those meetings.
There is a, the thing that with Thad, that doesn't frighten me, but concerns me, is rolling, taking away his city police department and rolling into the sheriffs. I understand cost, but one thing that he forgot to do and he was honest on that is roll the pension funding in. So, it's, you know, it's going to have a reduced net gain for them. And what about our fire? What about our paid fire fund? You know, is that something that he would want to see taken away?
That, again, it would be a council decision on that. And as far as the miss on that, I also put that on the finance director. That's really a finance directors. As a manager, you lean on your department heads and their expertise. And to me, that was an expertise that should have come through the finance director. So, yes, I mean, he took ownership of that. And you do have that in projects. Just one incident, they still have the cost savings, not as much as they thought, but unfortunately, that does happen in projects. So, I understand your concern, also thought about that, but when you think that through, if you look at many of our projects, we look at, there's always something that happens, something that might get missed. And that's why you rely on department heads and other people to help identify those things.
The article stated that he, he did not initiate getting rid of the police department. The council did that, the chief retired, he was in a process of trying to replace the chief. When the council approached him, let's look at this other option, and then it went from there. So, he did not initiate getting rid of the...
And I think for me, for a philosophical thing that we, we need to keep in mind is we set policy, we set direction, we set strategy at this level. And we look to that person sitting there to execute that policy, that strategy, that vision.
Thank you for saying that.
We've got to make sure that, that captain is the one that's best suited to do that. And again, I think the things like that, you know, decisions about dissolving a department or not aren't going to come at that level, they're going to come at this level and they should. That's where, that's where we should be setting that strategy. So, I think we should make sure, what our thought is, is hey, if we set sound strategy, vision, and direction, who's going to be the captain to navigate our ship into that port or to that destination? So...
Again, I don't disagree that Dave doesn't have that skill set and couldn't do that, but when I look at the complete skill sets that we're looking for, Thad hits more of my buckets, so to speak, than Dave. Any other comments or questions, something you want to discuss out with either?
He's got no historical district background and that's a big part of the city of Manatee, especially for downtown. No tribal experience. I think there's some issues where he misses in his skill set.
But Dave couldn't answer the questions on historical. He doesn't have the knowledge on historical district and what's needed required.
When, and we keep saying tribal, but there's, they're another form of government, just like fire or township, just like, so that, that can't be a point, in my opinion.
But he has experience working with other units of government.
Right. That's my point.
I think both of them have that.
Right.
That was good and out with you, Chuck.
I, I'm sorry. It's...
No, it's good. No, it's good now. It was good.
I think it's difficult for council here. We all respect Dave.
There's no question.
I understand that uncomfortable and...
This one sucks. I'm happy, I'm happy we got two candidates that we strongly support. Somehow we'll work through this, you know? It's good to have, you know, to be in this, in our position right now.
Right. And we have two candidates that want to be here.
But we need to only have one. There's only one job.
Very true.
I scored, I gave everybody else one an eight point five, one an eight.
Yes, are you guys at the point where we just take a role?
I just want to take my conscience out loud again.
Okay.
When I think about Mr. Bachmann and all the time he spent with the police and fire and the transition is going to happen within police and fire, I personally kind of like it the way it is. I think it's running really well. And will it continue to do that without him being that director? I don't know.
The thing about Mr. Bachmann is that he has, he has laid the succession plan out for his employees.
Yes, he has.
And they have their goals to hit. And he's very thorough when he does this.
But I do think there's some relevance to council member Zalinski's point is, one, there's some financial impacts with Chief Bachmann's promotion to that level. There's also some structural discussions that would happen at both those department levels. Do they both get promoted and we're back to a director or a director in the fire department and a director in his department? And is that, is that the, because that's a structure that is not that way anymore.
Right, but I don't think that even should come into these discussions because he's gonna, I mean, he's already announced his retirement. We have to answer that at some point, but it doesn't, shouldn't play into whether we choose Dave or not choose Dave, but how that, those departments are going to operate.
Yeah, you're right.
We need to look at both candidates, which one we feel is better qualified or we feel is a better candidate to fill the city manager's role. What happens afterwards?
Yeah, you're right.
We need to look at, at that point.
I was just spewing. I was just spewing, so...
And we're going to have to look at that, they're sooner or later, so, yeah.
Good point of contention. I think Dave has made it clear that, yeah, he threw his resume in because there was a question asked if he had an interest in the position. He's also filed to run for the sheriff in the election next year, but I think one way or the other, we're going to lose Dave from the public safety director position, because I think he's indicated that's coming to the end of its tenure for him and his career, and he's looking to move on. So I think not selecting him because we think we're going to keep him as public safety director is kind of a false assumption.
Sure, I agree, yeah. But again, I think your mayor's rationale is right, it's not based on those things, it's got to be based on the qualifications of who he feels ready to run the city.
Step in right now.
Right. We go forward, and those issues we'll tackle.
As they come.
As they come.
Are you guys...
I'm comfortable with it.
Doing a roll call?
Doing it with all of them.
Okay, yes. You guys are going to take a roll call of each council member, and each council member will then name the person they would like.
Mr. Stroh.
Stroh, thank you. Ready?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody.
Mr. Bachman.
Councilmember Gustin.
Mr. Taylor.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Mr. Bachman.
Mr. Taylor.
Mayor Portman Smith.
Mr. Bachman.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Got to hit this. Taylor.
And Mayor Kenny.
Mr. Taylor.
Three for Mr. Bachman and one for Mr. Taylor.
Right. The next question is, do we have, and we proceed and offer Mr. Taylor employment, or do we want to interview the last candidate?
I would say that we go ahead and offer Mr. Taylor employment. We've got to this point, I don't see that we need to go any farther.
I would agree, I hate to see us lose our candidate.
So I think we have a motion, I need a motion then.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the, is it background check?
If it's a conditional offer of employment, then all the background checking would follow automatically.
Yeah.
So the motion can just say conditional offer.
Conditional offer to Mr. Taylor.
I'll support.
Motion by councilmember Whitlam, supported by councilmember Cody, to make a conditional offer to Thad Taylor. Sean, can you please take the roll? Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Whitlam Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved. Concerned comments, if anyone would like to?
I will contact Kathy and Paul with the ex-nay, and both candidates will be by us now, they will be in the call. I keep around fourteen positions.
Turn to nine.
Thank you, everybody.